Committee on Economic Development and Tourism called to order. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person can make an audio or visual recording, a video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll.
Counselor Dionne?
Here.
Counselor Libbey LeBeau?
Chair Pereira?
Here. Counselor Libbey did call that she had a conflict and was unable to be here. Do we have any citizen input?
I have none.
None, okay. The minutes from the December 15, 2020. There's a motion to accept the minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number three on the agenda. Mr. Perry.
I would make a motion to lift that from the table.
A motion to lift from the table. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Item three on the agenda is a request for the administration and the Facilities Department to provide some information with funding to create and handle electrical needs of the gate of the city. And this was before us, and the administration, to my knowledge, has been working on it to get that done. Mrs. Sahadi?
Yes, Counselor Pereira, so that is correct. The city has been working on the project. To date, we have approximately $47,000 completed. After speaking with Mr. Gallagher, there is probably another $20,000 to be spent, and that project will be completed.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, Counselor.
My understanding was that the utility company on the side were helping us out as well.
Yes, they've been very helpful in the project. So I'm sorry I missed the beginning of Mrs. Sahadi's statement, but...
Mrs. Sahadi just said that there was $47,000 that was already in, and we would need an additional 20 to complete the work.
Yeah, so the 20 might be a little bit high. I think we're somewhere more along the lines of six to eight. So it's not as high as we originally had thought. There are a few things left to do. One is to put the concrete structure in place so that we can put the transformers on. Once the concrete structure is in place, then we can start to dig our trenches and run our lines. Once all the lines are in place, National Grid will come and install the actual transformer, and at which point, we can then connect the transformer to the lines that we've run, and the power will be complete. So those are the last few steps. So the concrete pad for the transformer is expected to be completed by the end of next week, and then the transformer itself being installed, running the lines, and connecting them within the month is my understanding.
And do we have this money? You have this money in your budget?
Yes, it is in the budget. All of these funds have come through the operating budget within Mr. Gallagher's department. You know, whether it be due to being more efficient in certain areas, COVID changed some priorities as far as projects that were going to be done. He was able to work this into that budget, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
It's great to hear things are getting done and moving. You know me, I love that, when things are getting done and moving. Counselor Dionne, do you have any questions?
Yeah. So there isn't going to be any additional funding necessary, or nothing moving forward?
There won't be, no.
No.
Okay, and it'll be a complete project?
Correct.
Okay, that's...
Since there's nothing else on this, a motion leave to withdraw would be in order.
I don't know if... I know Counselor LeBeau's not here. I think she had some questions. I didn't know if maybe we could make a motion to table.
You can make a motion to table, and we'll bring it up, but he says it's going to be done in a month.
I'd be glad to attend another meeting. Counselors, obviously Counselor LeBeau couldn't make it, so let's let the work continue on, make sure that timeframe that I laid out for you sticks, and I'd have no problem coming back to talk to you guys again, absolutely.
Then that would be fine. Then I would like to make the motion to table, please.
Okay, motion to table. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number two on the agenda is...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is to discuss the outdoor seating and dining for restaurants. Here to participate in that, we have Attorney Rumsey, we have Kerry Ayesh from Licensing, Mr. Hathaway from Building, and Heather from Police Department, if you want to come on down. All these mics are available, so wherever you feel more comfortable sitting...
Counselor, I'm going to step away. I will be here. If you have any questions on my end of the dining piece, I'll be here, okay?
Thank you, okay.
I'll give them some space.
There is an ordinance that was done, and it is in the...
If I may, Madam Chair, you might want to lift it from the table?
Sure.
Pardon? Lift it from the table?
Yeah.
Lift it from the table?
I'll make a resolution to lift it from the table.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
To my knowledge, Counselor Dionne and myself put in this resolution regarding the outdoor dining. It is in the Ordinance Committee, so Attorney Rumsey has been working on this. And if we could have Mr. Hathaway and member of the Police Department, and as long as Mrs. Ayesh, to kind of lay out what the policy are regarding outdoor dining. Mr. Hathaway?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So several weeks back, we had a meeting in the mayor's office, and the mayor preferred to keep things status quo, same as last year. And that's basically what we were asked to do. I brought up a question. Do we charge a fee for this permit? The mayor preferred not to, at the council's request last year, keep status quo. So that's a question for you today. Do you want to keep it as we did last year? The only exception was that the mayor would prefer to see it go until November 1st. We didn't really have a formal deadline last year. Based on the possibility in snow and winter and inclement weather, we come up, the mayor suggested that we make it November 1st as the deadline. This way, if anything, in the public way, they had ample time to get it off in case we had a snowstorm or anything unusual come along as far as weather is concerned. So I'd ask the council for two questions. Answer two questions is the fee, and is the November 1st deadline still suitable to the committee? And the third thing would be, are we... Last year, based on the COVID and the pandemic and everything, the council gave the approval to the parties in question, such as myself, the Police Department, and the Licensing Board, and Traffic. If we agreed, all agreed in the fire, if we all agreed on this in a public way, that we didn't have to come before you because it was in a public way, for this outdoor seating only, all the other things still apply where they have to apply to the council. But as far as outdoor seating, so is status quo the same? Do we have to come before you for every permit that we do? Or are you going to leave it up to the people involved to make that decision, okay, in a public way?
Go ahead, Counselor Dionne, go ahead.
Yeah, my only question would be, did that work well for everyone last year?
We're all still standing, we're not fighting.
So my opinion is, as long as everything worked well for everybody, it certainly seemed to go along very smoothly. I never heard anything negative about what we did last year. So for my part, I would be fine with leaving everything status quo. And as far as the permit fee, I see no reason, if we can make it easy for the, you know, people involved, the businesses involved, to stick with that. And if you're in agreement with that and feel comfortable with that, I'm good with that also. You know, the revenues generated might be more helpful than the actual price of a permit, I don't... So sometimes it's a balancing act. And the November 1st dining, I'm good with all of it.
Okay.
And with that, I yield.
Thank you. The question that I have is, when would it start? We have an ending date of November 1st, weather permitting. Obviously, if it's too cold, people aren't going to want to sit outside. But are we starting on May 30th as a start date, or May 1st?
We can. I would start as soon... So two things I want to remind you of. I don't have any control in a public way, personally, as a building commissioner. The only control I have in a public way is a concern that the handicap accessibility is to and from these locations. If that's in place, the rest is up to the Police Department, Licensing Board, and Traffic, and so on. So my only concern in a public way in most of these cases is handicap accessibility, and there's a designated seat or area for a handicapped person, okay? So that's where I'm restricted to. However, I did it with our applications last year, and I got involved in it because there was nobody else working, so that's why I... We did it. And it worked well. So I'm not trying to change it, I just want the committee to realize...
Right. Well, just to let the committee know as well, I have reached out to Dennis Baselli, who's the chairman of the Commission on Disability, and he was going to have Danny Robelod come in. Danny's a little tied up, he may be coming in a bit late, but, you know, for them to be aware of it. I know that you have a photograph, if you want to share that with Counselor Dionne, and perhaps we can get a copy for the clerk to put into the meetings, so that people will be able to occupy the sidewalk with tables, and then there will be a ramp that comes out, two parking lots will be taken, and people will be able to come out and access. Now, with... I know that you have nothing with the public way, and structures over a public way is another ordinance that Attorney Rumsey is working on. So these are two ordinances. One, for a structure on a public way or over a public way, like our banners, et cetera, that gets approval by the council. And then the other one is the ordinance for the dining. But run through for the... Well, for us to just get a sense of it, and for the public to hear, if you own a business and you want to have outdoor dining, where's the first place you go to get a permit or to put in an application? And then where would you go? If your establishment does not have liquor, there's one course that you take. If it does have liquor, then I think that that's where Ms. Ayesh from Licensing comes in, as to what you do with that license.
Okay, so you're asking a multitude of questions, and I'll try and answer them all.
Okay.
So first of all, the picture that Counselor Dionne has in front of her is through a grant program that the city has, and there's a gentleman out in the community soliciting restaurants and businesses if they'd like to have outdoor seating. And currently, there is three that I'm aware of that is looking to take advantage of that program. And that program, under the grant program, so we're going to extend this, so let's take a restaurant on South Main Street, without naming names, okay? And there is, the sidewalk is obviously limited in width from the sidewalk to the building. So they're going to put seating on the existing sidewalk. With the grant money, the proposal is to extend the sidewalk through that ramp system that you see, that decking system, into a couple of parking places, so as the public can still walk around that business and still have yet seating in front of the business. You follow?
Oh, I do.
Okay.
I do. My question is, if I may?
Yep.
We didn't go to this extent last year, correct?
No.
It was a matter of timing, too, last year.
No. Last year, that grant was at the end of the year, so to speak.
Right.
And I think it's... I can't speak for the grant, the gentleman from the grant, but I think it's been extended. I know he still has money. He's working on a couple of locations now, currently that we have visited and discussed. And as long as we have money, it's great, you know, in the grant. If the grant runs out, and then somebody else wants to take over, and we don't have the grant money, then the business is going to have to forego this expense, that... The debt, and so on and so forth, of extending the sidewalk.
So, and my other question on this would be, in terms of the Police Department and the Traffic Department, just their feelings on moving out into the street, taking up part of the street, restricting some parking, just what their overall opinion is on this?
So Counselor, if I may, Laura Ferreira, who's from Traffic, Heather from the Police Department, which is the public way in the Police Department, Kerry, if there's alcohol involved, such as a designated area for alcohol, has to be outlined, has to be secured from the public if you're serving alcohol. That's always been the Police Department and the Board's requirement. So through that process, this is the permit application, and all of us have to sign. Whether we do it over the phone, I did it last year over the phone a lot with Brian. He visited the site. We did it together as a team, and we had to put barriers up in certain areas. We outlined it with fencing. So at the end of the process, each individual that's in charge of, dependent upon what it is, has to sign this application. That's proof that we've gone through for every, all the parties involved, okay? So that's the... I used the building permit only because it was already there, but I've taken it and just put outdoor seating. That's all I've done, okay? The Licensing Board, through the City Council, came up with this permit application for alcohol in a public way. So again, it's basically similar to that, but it's through the Licensing Board, the City Council, so that you people have the documentation, or those prospective people have the documentation in regards to alcohol in a public way. And Heather has to, this year it's Heather, from the Police Department, so she'll have to approve that on behalf of the Licensing Board. But there has to be a segregated area, such as a fence or a roped-off area, if you introduce an alcohol, okay? If it's just a restaurant, it's fairly easy, but if there's alcohol, it's another issue. Okay? So that's the process, and I would suggest that they can start anywhere, but the easiest place is to start with me, and I'll get two or three places together in the course of a day, and we'll do two or three, like we did last year. We did two or three in the course of a day or two, dependent upon our schedules, and we'll get them moving, okay?
Thank you.
And if it's in a private... Now, the Fire Department is also involved because there's alcohol. So they're involved, and they sign the application. They will inspect also.
Do you yield?
I yield, I'm sorry.
Mr. Hathaway, what is the timeframe? I have a restaurant, I want outdoor dining. What is my timeframe to go into your office and sign that application?
Well, call me first, we'll go out and review it, we'll discuss the space, see if there's any requirements, because if you're in a parking lot, for an example, you would have to put concrete barriers, you'd have to agree to that. If you're not going through the grant process, you're going on your own, then it's just us that's involved, and how you want to proceed. It depends on how fast you want to proceed.
Similar to Almax Diner?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. So if all goes the same, we have Almax Diner, we have...
The one down here, across the street, a little sense of direction. Tapas? Tapas has concrete barriers, too.
No, not this year.
Oh, they don't?
Not so far. They're on the sidewalk, but they don't have a permit as of yet.
Okay.
St. John's Club has barriers, concrete barriers. I request them in parking lots for safety. Somebody mentioned Tapas 19 out here. They have concrete barriers also.
Yeah.
They haven't applied for a permit as of yet, but as soon as they apply, within that week, they should be...
Within that week?
Within that week.
So that there'll be some amount of speed to getting it done and get people...
We're going to get it out right away, like we did last year. There was no...
Good.
No real... As long as they supply the documentation and do their part, if they're not in the grant process, it'll take a week, week and a half the most.
Well, the grant process, for those that want to know, it's Jim McKee, and his number is 617-418-0728. And the clerk has that number, so if anybody needs it, they can call. But the grant money that he's getting, those, the fencing, et cetera, at the end of the year, like in November 1st, do those restaurants keep that stuff with them for the following year? Or do they have to turn that over to the city? And if they have to turn it over to the city, then I ask Mr. Perry, who's going to pick it up, and where we're going to keep them. So what's your thoughts on that?
You're asking me, right, Counselor?
I am.
Okay. So as far as I know, there is an allotment, I think that happened with Time Blossom last year, that Jim arranged for that stuff to be removed, all that blocking and the fencing that went to Time Blossom. He arranged it as part of, through the grant, and I would assume he's doing it again, that process. I haven't gotten involved... He's dealing basically right now with the restaurants or the establishments.
Right.
And then they make the agreement between them, as long as we've approved the process. So if there is another prominent restaurant in the city, I can name them, it's TAs, they're looking to do something on Morgan Street, and they'd have blocks, concrete blocks, they'd probably have fencing because they're going to introduce alcohol, and it's going to block a sidewalk, it's going to block a couple of parking places. He's in the process of discussing that with them, and if everything goes well, they'll do it there. And I would assume that Jim will allow enough of money in the grant to remove this stuff in the... Where it's going, I have no idea. Perhaps Mr. Perry may make room somewhere, I don't know.
Mr. Perry, would you like to add your thoughts on this? One more thing on your plate?
No, it's okay, sure. So yeah, you know, as Mr. Hathaway said, you know, with the grant process, I would hope that Mr. McKee would put some money in there to make sure that the removal of this stuff can be done. If it isn't removed for some reason, or the business decides, you know, we can't do it, they're not getting it done, Mr. Hathaway deems it needs to be removed immediately, then obviously, we would work with him to remove whatever needs to be removed. Storage-wise, I think this is a conversation we've had many times. We are limited with our storage, but I would imagine most of these restaurants are going to follow through with the program and the way it's supposed to be. So if we have a few restaurants here or there that need some things taken out, whether it be the heaters or the blocks, blocks are easy, we could store those at DPW. The heaters and things like that, we could store at our Seaberry location. We will be moving out of Bank Street Amory soon, so that's not there anymore, that's what they used last year, so... But we will find room, but I honestly think most of the restaurants will follow through correctly.
Well, and some of them that don't have the concrete barriers have more of a fencing type, that they could store in their own restaurant, or store it at their house and bring it back next year.
Correct.
All right, thank you, Mr. Perry.
You're welcome.
Do you have anything to add from the Police Department, what your concerns are? Are you available as often as Mr. Hathaway is to go out and check these?
Yes, so myself and Mr. Hathaway have been in communication, we've been making appointments, and as they come up, we've been going and inspecting the restaurants as needed. So I am available to do so, and I don't foresee any issues. I'm here Monday through Friday, if, you know, if anything else arises and we need to come in on a different day, I'm also available, but so far, things have been moving pretty smoothly.
Great, thank you very much, and welcome.
Thank you.
Kerry Ayesh, you have any problems, any concerns you want to bring up about licensing?
No, Glenn and I are getting real, we're familiar from... I mean, last year was a learning process, and it was kind of hurry up, we've got to learn this and get it together quickly, but we all work very well together. We call, four of us, four or five of us get together, go to the location where a couple of them, like Glenn had mentioned, and it goes really smoothly overall.
Thank you. Attorney Rumsey, I guess the ball's in your court, to come up with both ordinances, one just for the public way, and the other ordinance that outdoor dining, per the restrictions outlined by Mr. Hathaway, will occur in Fall River from May 1st to November 1st. And this year, there is no fee if the council decides at a later time that we want to put a fee, but I just think we're all sensitive to COVID and how much restaurants suffered last year, that the mayor and the council agree that there be no fee.
Okay. So the, I guess the question I have as to Section 66, 258, does the City Council want to retain their approval rights essentially, that... Or do you want to allow the administration to just decide on a case-by-case? What happens essentially? Is that a restaurant won't... They could move and get the... The permit's good for a year, so that restaurant then anticipates the need for outdoor dining in a public way can apply as soon as they want during the beginning of the year. Doesn't mean they have to use it, it's good for one year. What happens, I think, is sometimes they get behind the eight ball, they forget to apply to the City Council, they get a nice warm weekend, and then they want the city to react instantaneously. And although it's easier for Mr. Hathaway to react very quickly and get his people together, it's much harder to get City Council approval immediately. So I think that, a lot of times, seems to be the hurdle for restaurants, and it's not the City Council's fault by any means, but they just don't know why the City Council can't give the immediate approval.
Counselor Dionne?
So the permit is good for a year, but only usable within a certain timeframe? Like in other words, we're saying we have a start date of May 1st going to November 1st. So when you say... Just basically for clarification, like in other words, I don't want somebody to think that if they apply for the permit and they granted the permit, and it's an annual permit, that they're able to use it year-round?
That's correct. The reason why, I guess, the one-year licensing period was added to the proposed ordinance was just to resolve the issue. It doesn't change the time from May 1st to November... Was it November 1st and November 30?
November 1st.
Okay. So it doesn't change that timeframe, but it gives them the opportunity to request the City Council's permission now, before...
And apply well in advance.
Right.
If I may, so last year, when we had these discussions, it was agreed upon, due to the pandemic, the council, the council would relinquish those responsibilities due to the pandemic, and due to the time constraints, like council's referring to, in getting to the council and getting all this paperwork, and then having another meeting. So during the pandemic, for the public way, that's what we're trying to distinguish. One other note, if I issue a building permit for a temporary structure, such as a tent on private property, nothing to do with public way, that building permit is only good for 180 days by building code purposes. So I have one place already has applied, and I asked them to make sure that they kept in mind the 180-day restriction, because they'd have to apply again if they applied last month, then 180 days come in, and they still, the season was still good for them. So... But I'm going to, in private property, okay, I'm going to put on the permit November 1st, so that they coincide and we don't get into that conflict. But the building permit code, building code, requires maximum 180 days for a temporary structure, just so you're clear on that.
Well, basically, May 1st, November 1st would pretty much be the 180 days.
Correct, but that's for a public way. We're talking two different things, okay? And I just want to distinguish the two different things. Counsel is referring to public ways.
Okay.
Because we don't need council approval on private property?
Right.
Okay, that's the difference.
Right. Yeah, no, again, I mean, I've said it before, and I understand, maybe it sounded like I went off track on that, but I have no issue with you, all of you, taking care of it. I don't feel that every single one should have to come before the council. I mean, I don't know what you're feeling.
I agree. I agree, and I think that because the council only meets twice a month, if somebody came in, and then they'd have to wait two weeks, and then it's approved, by the time it gets back, you know, it just, it ties up time. We're trying to do things in a more expedient fashion, but making sure that we're within the law. And I think, you know, all of you have done a great job with last year, and the council was kind of exempt from that, and it worked out well. So sometimes, you know, the more people involved...
You can also retain revocation rights, honestly. I mean, if you wanted to, you could give the administration the ability to preliminarily approve of the outdoor dining pending the next City Council meeting, which will, of course, give the City Council revocation rights if they disagree with the administration and think it's an unsafe area, or they don't want to provide it. And that's just another way to look at it.
Yeah. Well, I think if Mr. Hathaway's giving them, everybody else has signed off on it, it's okay. If that person isn't doing what they're supposed to be doing, then Mr. Hathaway's going to come and tell them, you're not following the rules, and you're going to be shut down, so we don't really need to be there. But do you think, Ms. Attorney Rumsey, that you can have this written up? I believe we have another Ordinance Committee meeting on the 20th?
Yeah, I think we do.
If you could write it up and get it in for the 20th?
Working on it.
Then they could approve it, you know, or discuss it on the 20th for approval, so that Mr. Hathaway and everyone else can move on it, because May 1st is...
It is right around the corner.
Right around the corner.
Yeah. The only other question...
Let's see what I can do. I'm scheduled to be on vacation all of next week, but I can see if I can get it done by Friday.
Great, you have it done by Friday, send us a copy of it. And are you here on the 20th of April?
No, that's, I think, a Wednesday.
That's a Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Tuesday? No, I'm out of town.
Okay. Can you have Gary Howiak, Attorney Howiak, come in with it?
I'm not...
Uh, I'm not sure, it's school vacation week, so I'm just not sure whether he's around either, but I know he has school-aged children.
Okay. Okay.
I can, I can get back to you on that.
I'd appreciate it, because I think that we're gonna be able to refer this to ordinance, um, so that they can work on it. We just wanted to have a little bit of discussion, because it really, it opens up economic development for these restaurants that have been suffering, um, you know, through the pandemic. So now, and I think it gives life to a city, um, to see people sitting outside, and people wanna do that. You know, you go to places and people are sitting outside, it just gives you a nice, uh, environment. And if they can do it in other communities, by golly, we can do it here in Fall River. So, thank you, Mr. Hathaway, Heather, um, Mrs. Kerry. Uh, thank you, 'cause I called her Heather, I didn't wanna say Mrs., make you feel older. Thank you both, um, and you look terrific, thank you both for sharing with us and, and helping us. Mr. Perry, as always, thank you. Mr. Hathaway?
You, we're good.
Um, do we have a motion to refer this to ordinance committee?
I'll make the motion to refer it to ordinance.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
May I have my picture back?
Colleen, I have to get you a copy of that, if you'd like.
A copy of that picture, that would be great, Kerry, yeah, that would be great.
If I could have a copy, that, that, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
And whatever you're using for a, uh.
Yeah, it's just.
My office, I'm already, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
The third thing on the agenda is the public's art policy. Mr. Rumsey, you're on the public art policy?
I'll be right back, now, if you want some, please.
Okay. So the public arts policy, um, that you have submitted, um, as part of, uh, the ordinance, that would be for public arts policy, I'd like to, uh, both have you state your name and address, although I'm sure people are familiar with you.
David Dennis, one thirty-two Highland Avenue, Fall River.
Sandy Dennis, one thirty-two Highland Avenue, Fall River. Thank you. Um, if you'd like to go through this and.
Yeah, I'll start off.
Explain a little bit.
Yeah, I'll start off in just a very brief history of how we, we got here. Uh, for those people who don't know, and mostly people listening, not so much the, the, uh, committee, but Creative Arts Network has been around for, we're heading into our eighth year. We're not a five oh one C three nonprofit, uh, and really, we've, for the last eight years, we've been promoting and supporting art culture and tourism in the city, for those of you who know. In the last year or so, we have sort of pivoted away from programming, we did a lot of programming initially, but with COVID, it became more and more difficult. So what we ended up doing was, we have been focusing on, um, on doing projects. And some of the projects that we've completed in the last year are the, the Mass Cultural District, which you know is on the waterfront, that was a five-year project. We completed a hydrangea project, which is ongoing here in the city. Uh, we had the city named the Hydrangea Flower as the ornamental flower of the city. We're beginning a project on the waterfront now with Mass, uh, Mass dot, that's do this dot soon.
And Mass Coastal Rail.
And Mass Coastal Rail. So that's really what we've been, uh, focusing on in the last eight, probably eighteen months. What we have before the committee tonight is a, essentially, uh, an opportunity to codify, uh, some public policy relating to, um, basically, public art. This is a project that has been going on statewide since Governor Patrick initiated it several years ago, and it's been strongly supported by the Baker administration. So it's, it's an opportunity really to codify, uh, public art policy, policy in the city of Florida. One of the problems, as we all know, those of us who've been in government, councils come and go, and administrations come and go, and there's no real framework to keep these projects going. There's no guidelines, there's no, there's nothing to look at. So the opportunity we have before us now is actually to codify that, and so that subsequent administrations and councils will have an ordinance to, to go by and to promote, uh, art as, as a public policy in the city of Florida. It's highly supported, again, like I said, by, uh, by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, they're strongly encouraging communities to adopt, adopt a public art policy. Uh, and we've provided you with what we think is a very good framework for a public art policy in the city of Fall River. Uh, basically, what I did was, we went around, uh, we looked at a lot of the communities who offer, uh, and who have already passed a public art policy. We've taken essentially the best practices, uh, and we reduced it down into a, uh, ordinance for the city of Fall River to adopt. So we tried to make it easy, we tried to make it quick, and, uh, you know, I really do appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight. This is a very short turnaround for the council, as I remember.
You know me, turn it around quick.
That's right, so we're making a little action in the city. Uh, but nevertheless, here it is, it's in front of you, we were here last week, it's here now. Uh, I've given a copy to, uh, Attorney Rumsey, the city corporate counsel, take a, take a look at. Uh, I, I don't know that there's anything to add or subtract. Again, we took into consideration, we both know the city fairly well, so we took that into consideration. And, uh, what we did here was we provided, I think, a very, very, very workable and adoptable, uh, public art policy for the city of Fall River.
Well, and I think, um, also in doing this for the public arts policy is to establish a public arts commission.
That's included.
It's included in this.
That's included.
And I think when you look at the public arts commission, shall be composed of nine members, each of whom shall have a vote. Membership on the commission must have qualified backgrounds in one or more of, but not limited to the following areas. The arts, art education, art criticism, a museum curation, architectural, and at no time will the majority of commissioners be comprised of members, um, other than those with qualified backgrounds. I think that that's important, because oftentimes, we have boards and commissions in the city that wonderful people serve on, but sometimes they have limited information relative to those boards and commissions, so it, it takes a while to catch up. So, you know, I like that, that people need to be invested in that. And we have great colleges in our area who have, you know, people in those positions that would probably enhance the commission and, uh, you know, um, get things done. Uh, there are four people will be appointed by the mayor, and four who will be appointed by the Fall River City Council. And the executive director of CAN, um, Creative Arts Network will also be, so there's your, your nine people. So it's fifty-fifty, um, on, on selection from administration and from council, I think that's a good balance. And individuals are encouraged to apply, um, to the existing City of Fall River Commission for the appointment process, that all members of the public arts commission shall serve without compensation. Uh, the commissioner shall initially serve two-year terms, and the executive director of Creative Arts Net- Network, therefore referred to as CAN, managing the entity, um, for the Fall River Waterfront Cultural District shall serve, um, for the length of their position. Each commissioner will serve two executive terms and shall be eligible for reappointment after one calendar year. After the end of his or her term, a member appointed to fill a vacancy shall serve the remainder of the unexpired term. And any member of the public arts, uh, commission may be removed from office for lack of attendance or neglect of duty, and removal shall be affected by a majority vote of the commission, and then get the approval of the council. Uh, the public arts commission will select as one of the members a chairman, and a vice chairman, and a secretary. The chairman, vice chairman, and secretary shall receive no salary for their services. For the purpose of the ordinance, a full quorum consisting of fifty percent plus one of five present members of the commission. Specific neighborhoods and areas within Fall River will require additional planning and support for public projects. To that end, the public arts commission will deputize a neighborhood or a specific area ad hoc public planning committee based on the desires of the needs in that community. The ad hoc committees will exist only for the length of the project's concept and execution. And I think that's good, because at the same time, you're getting a lot of the neighborhoods involved. Um, and, you know, we pride ourselves on, um, getting support and getting, um, having communication with people in various neighborhoods. Uh, the other thing I liked about this, uh, when I read it was, and I did talk to Mr. Dion, because one of the questions was, who would hold the financing for any grant applications, et cetera? And Mr. Dion said he would love to do that through his office, um, that they would be able to manage the, the funding and apply for the grants and do that type of thing. Um, you know, and, and it's basically to increase public awareness of arts and culture. And there are so many grants out there that we could apply for, and I like the waterfront district. As you know, I've been very involved with the Vietnam Memorial Wall, and when we look at the Vietnam Wall, the Maritime Museum, the battleship, Heritage State Park, if that was all linked together, and there's no clear communication of what other events are here, and I think it's important that people look at your website that you have, um, if you wanna share that website.
It's creativeartsnetwork.org.
Creative dot net, creative.
Creativeartsnetwork.org.
Not, okay, and, but I think that has loads and loads of information on it, and it can be linked from the city website, but sometimes it's hard to find.
I know.
Um, you know, in, in that linkage. But other than that, I mean, I've looked at it, I think it's good, um, and it would have to go back to ordinance committee, uh, after we discussed it here. I know it wasn't ordinance, and they sent it to the Economic Development Committee for some further discussion on it. But this is a culmination, I read all of the ordinances that you had provided from other, um, communities, and this is kind of a culmination of all of them. Um, you know, I mean, I'm in favor of doing something like this, I think it would really bring, you know, a lot of awareness to, you know.
And I, and I think it's, it's also important, as I said earlier, to create some continuity in the city, as I said. Uh, and so there's, uh, there'll be ongoing work in the arts and cultural and tourism community.
And, and on the section that you were just talking about, on the.
What number is that?
The member section.
Yes.
I think it's important when we talk and we put this in, we put the neighborhood portion in there specifically, because, um, each neighborhood has their own distinct image. Uh, and we did that with an event when we did the mini golf, um, programming with the United Way, the time we collaborated with them. And every neighborhood had a putting green, and they had to make something for their putting green associated to their neighborhood. So what we'll be doing as an organization is we will be reaching out to the organizations, probably via Zoom, um, to see if they can do an inventory of their neighborhood, because I don't think a lot of people realize how much public art the city actually has. Uh, sculptures, um, just all the memorials, some of the architecture on the buildings, uh, even some of our historic stone walls are pieces of art, to me, anyway. Um, we've got murals in the city that need to be inventoried, so I, I think that where we will start, and then the commission can have an ad hoc committee, uh, just to do the inventory. But I know as an organization, we are already planning to reach out to the neighborhoods, uh, and talk a little bit about this, and have them, get them a little more engaged again, because they, with COVID, they, everybody's kind of fallen off. Uh, so I think it's time now that everybody come together. But just a couple of little points, um, that a public art policy will do for the city, and I just jotted them down before I got here tonight. Uh, it'll inventory our assets, like our memorials, our sculptures, our architect, our fountains. We have some really great Olmsted Fountains that the CPC just funded, uh, and they're absolutely pieces of art, they're beautiful. Um, public gardens, uh, interpretive boards, there's a lot of interpretive boards in the city, and those are pieces of public art. Um, I know we're working on an outdoor exhibit now with DOT. Um, digital lighting, city halls lit up, YMCA's lit up, Charlton Memorial's lit up. There's, uh, the church on Rock Street's lit up at night, so digital lighting is considered public art. And when you drive by, you look at it and you say, oh my God, that's so pretty, it's public art. So that needs to be inventoried too in the city.
Mrs. Dennis?
Yes.
One of the things that I find, I, I've been walking the, the bike trail a lot, uh, the Quikashen River Trail, and, uh, you know, under the bridges, you see graffiti. I mean, is there a way, um, for, you know, as this art, that is a form of art, uh, graffiti, but to have it where people that do that kind of thing, to have it in a certain area, and then, you know, you paint the wall white again, and other people, um, can come and display things? I, I think that we need to look at an art policy for all ages.
Absolutely.
And I know that you've been good at doing that, because when my grandchildren were younger, um, I remember going to, um, different events. One was up the Corky Road, it was lots of fun, you know, doing different kind of art and cultural things with different ages. But that's one that, um, rather than tagging, it's graffiti art, um, if there were places that we could do that.
Absolutely.
So, you know.
And tho- the Quikashen rail tunnels, that's been part of the conversation, I think, during the last three administrations.
Right.
Uh, and I think some of it is who owns the land that the tunnels are on, is it, is it the city, is it DOT, do they own some of it? So I think there was some logistics behind the tunnels, and the tunnels are really expensive to mural, because we tried getting prices for mural sections on that. Uh, but if we establish a formal public art policy, and, and like Dave said, Governor Patrick initiated the, it's called, um, it's called the MPAP, and basically what it does is it, five, like five per, point five percent of a project should go into public art, not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and Governor Baker just amended that to not exceed a hundred thousand dollars. And then I've got all the legislation in here, but it's only for Boston and gateway cities. So Fall River being a gateway city, when we have municipal projects, and there are large construction projects like the high school, um, point five percent of that project should incorporate public art.
And, and, I mean, I am on the building committee at the high school.
I could certainly take you there, but they do have, uh, a lot of the public art.
They've taken, uh, wood beams from King Philip Mills, so they have, you know, part of our history. Um, the, the little restaurant there that they're having, which is, is called The Granite, um, you know, uh, after all of the granite in, in the city. They also have huge murals going from the, the bottom.
Nice.
All the way up, like, three or four floors with different scenes of, of historic Fall River.
The bells.
So, right, the bells are beautiful. Um, so they, you're right, they're, just in that one building, we can pick a number of things that, um.
But some of, some of.
We have the man murals, not to interrupt, we have the man murals.
Which are priceless, really.
Which are priceless.
Um, some.
Trying to move those, you can't.
No, you can't move those.
Impossible, so they have to digitize them.
But they can be preserved.
Yeah.
Yes.
And documented, but, but some of the other things that public art will do is it'll preserve our, our existing assets, and it's gonna increase our public inventory, which I think is important for economic development and tourism. And I, it'll identify best practices, goals, and guidelines, and it's gonna offer the city, I think, like Dave says, some long-term sustainability for the art and culture, um, organizations, and art and culture as a city. Uh, and it'll grow and build through the different administrations, and it's gonna contribute to communities' identity. It's gonna really identify who we are, especially with the different neighborhoods. And it's gonna add value to the cultural aesthetic and economic vitality of our community. And investment in our future is gonna enhance our public places, it's gonna grow in cultural tourism, identify us as an art and culture destination, because if you look where people go to visit, they love to go places where there are things, and things, to me, is a lot of public art. Uh, and it, it just grows a community's sense of pride. It's like I said at your other meeting, when you go on vacation, people are always looking for places to take pictures, and they take them in front of public art.
True.
So that's why you do need public art to kind of grow your city. Uh, and, and we try to incorporate as much into this ordinance without it becoming too complicated and confusing. Uh, as far as the, the nine-member commission, um, each branch has specific categories. We thought that that would be a good way to go. One of them is through the local public school, high school, uh, to. One of them is through the local public school, high school, to have someone at that level on this commission. But you need, you need really high-quality, experienced people to sit on this commission if it's going to be run right.
And, well, on page four of five, on section funding, any grants or monetary gifts received by the Public Arts Commission shall be maintained in a designated account with the, and that would be, department, question mark, would be-
Community maintenance.
Community development.
Oh, development. And then we've also done a lot of research that you don't have, but on gifts and donations, if people make gifts and donations to the city for public art, there's all kinds of, we've looked at, and I think you had the original piece of public art policy that we drafted, which is much longer than this.
Right.
Those were basically our notes and ideas. So what we did is we consolidated that down to this really four-page ordinance to make it easier. But a lot of what was in that original piece will be incorporated in what the commission would do.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney Rumsey, I know that, I know that you have to leave, but the, this ordinance, the one that we just got, you had gotten it before via email, we all had gotten this draft by email, but if this one, if we could have a time when this one would come back to ordinance?
Okay.
So that it can be put through, because as soon as it's put through and approved by council, they'll put the commission together within 31 days.
Is the date of the next ordinance committee?
Is the 20th. But I don't know if you're going to have the other one and this one done by then.
Probably not this one. This one's, this one's new to me. The other one I've looked at a few times. This probably won't be ready to go by the 20th.
Counselor Dion?
Would this need to go to ordinance first so the members of ordinance could review it, look at it, and, I suppose, you know, give their opinion on it prior to sending it to Corporation Council?
But he needs to add in where the department was. If you just want to put in that the department will be the CDA?
Okay.
Put it in, and then we can refer that. I just want to make that notation in there. Or, Madam Clerk, can we just make the notation that on this draft ordinance, that the department would be the Community Development Agency?
Yeah, but I mean, it would still need to go to ordinance.
Exactly.
It's not really, it needs to be numbered, placed in a proper chapter and stuff.
Right.
So it's not in the proper format to be-
Correct.
... test for first reading or anything. You could-
It could go to ordinance as-is with an attachment that the funding source would be Community Development Agency. And then from there, we can send it to Attorney Rumsey.
Right, we can get the ball rolling. The changes can be made, you know, well after the ordinance committee meeting as well.
Okay.
It needs to be sent for review, et cetera.
Right, it's got to go to ordinance, absolutely.
It does need to go to ordinance.
Right.
So you could refer it to ordinance, and Attorney Rumsey could work on it, and when it's put on the agenda, he could come in with updates.
We could refer it to both ordinance committee and also a copy to Attorney Rumsey.
Yes, could do that.
Makes sense.
So do you want us to email everybody? You've got the draft, you want us to email your other committee members?
Colleen. Colleen has the draft.
We have it in email form so she can send it to the other members.
All right, I'll do that.
Could I get one more hard copy from you, though?
But you know what I do like?
Thank you.
Is that through this Art and Culture Commission, we'll also be able to look at all of the diverse ethnic groups we have in the city and really kind of create something there. We are very fortunate to have such a diverse ethnic group in the city, and that doesn't work. You know, my idea was having Fall River celebrates diversity-
Yeah.
-and having something at Heritage State Park where all the different ethnic groups can come in with samplings of their food for a dollar, so I can try this for a dollar or try that. So for $5, I get to try five different things and have a stage where every ethnic group gets to, you know, play a song, do a dance, something from that cultural group. And I think it would bring a lot of people together, and I think we'd learn that although we have all these cultures, we're all the same people. You know, we're all the same people, and we'd get to meet people. Sometimes I think we're afraid to meet others. We don't know if they're going to accept us, if they're not going to accept us. And I think it would be great, and I've talked to Bill Bailey about that too, like, let's do something like that. Get the youth. If we can get people younger to meet each other, it just makes for more vibrant community. You know, we all live here together.
Two years ago, we actually applied for a grant for that, for Heritage State Park, to do exactly that. And we didn't get the grant, but we wanted to do the different cultures with the entertainment, the clothing, the food, but unfortunately, we didn't get that particular grant.
Well, there's another summer coming, and there are more grants, so we just keep trying.
That's right, so we'll push for next year.
I've been trying since 1992 to get Davis Beach cleared out, and I just cleared it this week, so.
And so just so that you know, we-
Things take time.
We are working on, this is a sample of the quality of a brochure that we are in the process of putting together for the cultural district. So every, every business and organization in the new waterfront cultural district will be listed in this book. It's been a challenge because some have left, now we've got another new, and oh, Irene's, we just found out Irene's is leaving Columbia Street, so.
Funding connect, you're right.
We get the funding, yeah, we got the funding to do all of this. We just got more funding to do another project in the waterfront cultural district. So we've been fortunate during COVID. We've just received four grants, and we're waiting on-
Where are those books now?
We are in the process of working with the printer and getting all the narratives and images for it. And then we'll be working with the printer to lay it out and print it. And then we have a cultural tourism map that we're ordering 10,000 of to be distributed all throughout Massachusetts, Rhode Island, and portions of Connecticut for tourism. So we have a lot of, we have a lot of COVID projects that are social distance projects, I should say-
Thank you.
-that we've been working on, so.
Counselor Dion?
I have a question.
Yes.
We do, at this time, have individuals and entities who have been, for lack of a better word, I suppose, applying artwork and paintings to some of our buildings around the city. So how, how does this affect them, or how does, how do we incorporate them? Since we're going to have an official policy, they're obviously, they're obviously operating not under an official policy, so.
Yeah, they would probably, they would go to the commission, and then the commission could direct them. Because the whole purpose of the commission is to make sure that we have, you know, quality public art, and they abide the guidelines and the rules. And part of the ordinance is that they would work with the appropriate departments, like the building department, because anyone that puts up any kind of a big sign or probably been a mural, you've got to get permits and licenses and all that. So this commission would be there to help guide them, not unlike what they're doing with the outdoor dining. So there would be someone on that commission that would spearhead that and help them and direct them on what to do, and to vet some of these projects.
Yeah, so I think, to your question, you know, we've all had a lot of, you know, a lot of good things, and I said this when I was on the councils, a lot of good things happened at Fall River. As I say, good things do happen at Fall River. The problem with the city has been for years and years, there's never been a coordinated effort. So lots of projects get started, there's a lot of enthusiasm, there's resources that are poured into them. And unfortunately, some of the projects never, you know, get completed or finished through our fruition because they don't get the assistance that they need. And so even with Creative Arts Network, the intent of that was to be a resource for people so that people could come and say, look, I want to do this, I don't know where, I'd like to open up a storefront, you know, we used to have the storefronts, the artist storefronts and all this kind of thing. So the idea behind a commission now is really to create a commission that people can go to. So when somebody comes into this, this is, I want to do this, I want to do a mural, gee, where do I go? What do I do? Well, now it's real easy because there's really nobody to point to in the city. It's the commission, it's the Arts and Cultural Commission. Go see them. They'll guide you through the process, they'll tell you what you need to do, they'll hook you up with whoever you need to be hooked up with, city departments and agencies and people in the community. And hopefully, the people that sit on this community will be themselves connected in the arts and cultural community. They will know the resources, whether they're from, you know, somebody from BCC and UMass-Dortmund and some of the other organizations in the city. So it'll be a resource for the city, and there'll be some continuity. So when people come into the city, they'll know where to go, or people will be able to tell them where to go. As a city council, you'll be able to go to the Arts and Cultural Commission. That's where you need to go.
Well, I thought that-
They'll tell you, they'll tell you what you need to do.
Right.
They'll tell you where to go.
Yeah, and I thought that was important to bring out because you're right. It's not strictly going to be an approval process-
No.
-and somebody you go to for approval, it's guidance, it's resource, it's everything. It would be all encompassing.
Yeah.
Just like, I mean, and I could envision, you know, a commission meeting where somebody comes and, you know, Michelle Dion says, I want to do something in the city. You're on the agenda, you sit, and you get all the people in the city that you need to speak to right, right at the table, and you say, okay, what do I need to do? Well, here's what you need to do. Here are the 10 things you need to do. Go here, go there. So it's a resource. And not only, not only that, but they will, but they will set some consistent policy in the city. Because again, there's no body in the city to do that.
There's not.
I don't know who does that in the city.
We don't even have a tourism director, so it's not like-
Right.
-you can go to a tourism director who's going to funnel you out to wherever.
So, so they'll help create policy over time, provide direction to people who are interested in doing things in the city, arts and culture and tourism related. So it ends up being a resource, and hopefully, it'll be, it'll be a high-level commission where there'll really be actually people on there that have the, you know, the experience and the background to keep it going and to give quality advice to people. That's the intent.
And hopefully, hopefully, with the right commission, they'll be able to bring in a whole new funding source because then they can work with the artists too to, you know, reach out for funding that they probably never even knew they could and hopefully collaborate with the city grant writer. So if this commission, and I'm a stickler about that because it just, it needs to be a high caliber commission for this if you want it to work well. You want people that really do know the industry. You need art historians on this commission. And if you see in the ordinance where we wrote a certain percentage of an artist's salary because they're a true artist, their life is their art, and they're making money off it. We don't necessarily, not that they're not good, but you don't want an artist that is just doing it part-time to have fun. You want a qualified, paid artist. This is their business, they understand it, they went to school for art history, whatever, to sit on this commission. At least, that's my feeling. Will they all be from Fall River? Probably not. They probably won't be, and I don't think that's such a bad idea because you want the best of the best for this commission, for this city, because this city has a very rich history. We have some of the most amazing architecture. We have some of the most amazing public art that people don't even know about. That archway down at Heritage State Park where the Quikashan River comes, that alone is a piece of art. So with the right people on here, we can bring attention to that, I think.
I think the ordinance, what it really, what it really boils down to is it puts the city in the business officially of promoting and supporting art, cultural, and tourism, and all the economic benefits and the cultural benefits that flow from that. It now says, you know, there are all disparate groups around the city, it now says the city is in the business officially of promoting arts, cultural, arts, culture, and tourism. That's really, that's really what, that's really what this says. That's really what the ordinance says. And I think we should be.
Well, and I'll tell you, when we went down to the Carolinas once, we had this little tour with some of the homes-
Oh, yeah.
-down in Charleston, and I said to my husband, they think these homes are nice?
Listen.
We knock them out of the park, and we don't push our own.
I'm going to share one quick story. We were sitting on our porch, this is several years ago, it was a Saturday morning, we were having coffee on our front porch, which, you know, we do frequently. Nice spring day, gentleman walking up the street, and he was, he was looking around, looking around like he was lost. So I said, gee, excuse me, I said, are you looking for something? You're lost? He says, oh, no, 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 he says, I'm looking at, I'm looking at your houses. I said, oh, I said, to buy or to? He said, oh, no, 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 he says, I love historic districts, he said, and he says, I was, I was coming from Baltimore, retired, semi-retired dentist, heading down to Cape Cod. He got off the highway to get some gas, and he sort of got lost. And he was driving up to the Highland Historic District, and he saw the sign, it said Highland Historic District. He says, I've done this all over the country. It's a hobby. I go around the country, I go to these historic districts, and I look at historic districts in the country. He said, I can tell you, you have one of the finest, most interesting cultural districts I've ever seen in the entire country, and I've been doing this well over 30 years. The problem is, we don't promote it. We should have tours of our cultural district. We should have people up there.
We're working on it now.
We're working on it. But, but it's, it's the, it's the fourth largest historic district in the country. It's Savannah, Georgia, it's Charleston South, I'm sorry, Charleston, South Carolina, Georgia, New Orleans, and Fall River is the fourth largest in the country.
And we don't promote it.
And we have a diverse inventory.
We don't promote it, it's the best kept secret around.
And our inventory is so diverse in our homes up there. I remember doing the holiday house tours because we had, people loved it, you know, so we-
It was a huge hit.
This, this can just help build-
We had 215, we had 215 people come through our house.
I loved it.
There are still people we see today that we, that we met, that remember us, not so much we, they, who come up to us and say, oh, we were in your house. It's like, really? Was it the Christmas party? But, but they go back and they say, no, no, it was the house tours, that was great. We came from Brockton, we came from, you know, Sharon, we came from Totten, we came, and, and, and it was, it was a huge success.
That was wonderful.
It was.
Jim Sewell's house is incredible.
Yeah.
Lima's house.
I know.
Lima's house, there was, but he's the third owner of that house.
Yeah.
It's amazing, and the furnishings match, and Charlie.
Yeah.
I mean, that was, it was simply amazing to see the architecture, the woodwork, you know, and the craftsmanship that's gone into these homes, the widow peaks, and it, I missed that, I kind of liked that.
And that's all public art, really. It's, it's just our inventory.
It's one of the greatest assets the city has, and it's probably one of the least utilized in the city.
And we have some of the best parks. We have some, we, when we went to New York, because we went to the conservancy, Dave I and Al Lima, to talk about putting North Park into a conservancy with the hospital, who was interested in working with us at that time. And we told him what our inventory was, and his jaw just dropped.
The Central Park, the conservancy, the president.
And this was the president of-
Central Park Conservancy.
-the Central Park Conservancy, and he was like, you don't know how lucky you people are to have such an inventory in your city. And it's not just our Olmsted pieces that we have, even our greens. Like, when we did, and I used to do the Adopta Park, and, you know, and we inventoried a lot of those little greens and stuff, we have a lot of wonderful inventory. And people are looking for more public gardens because when we did our survey, they want to be outside, they want to do tours, they like public, they want to do public gardens. And that's what made us fast-track this, is after we did our survey, listening to, you know, what the people of the city and the area wanted, so. But we've got lots of information, so if you have any questions, just give us a call.
Thank you.
Thank you.